We have a, uh, our continuing public hearing is seven thirty which will happen at that time on the floor. So in the meantime, um, you would, uh, do you want to do some minutes for us, Jeff?
Second. Yeah, if you would, I'm just, I'm trying to bounce out of there.
Minutes of five twenty twenty-five. Make the motion that we, that we accept the minutes of five twenty twenty-five.
You have a minute.
Second.
One second.
Okay, okay. Um, any further discussion on it?
So that was the, uh, yeah, okay.
The long.
That's the long one, Warren, um.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry, on that one there.
Take it a week twenty-two.
Yeah, could, if we could skip over that one, I've skimmed through it, I have not read it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and the other two are much, much shorter, so the other two I have no problem with, I don't know about you, Dave, but that one there is.
I didn't get to go through it, I was present, but I didn't get to go through it.
Yeah, okay.
So if we just skip that one and show the other two, I'm cool with that.
So that'll, I will be saying in my motion and, uh, you send your second and, uh, and Debbie, can you just put this on the next reading, give him a chance to review it? No problem at all.
Thank you.
Okay, um, you want to move the next one or are you moving your down?
I will, that we accept the minutes for.
Six three twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Make a motion in a second, if further discussion. Are you none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 We have a.
It's John, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, uh, all right, so, uh, did I kind of do a, uh, roll call vote, so, um, it will be, uh, I will ask for the votes, so John, what'd you say?
Uh, for six three twenty-five, it's aye.
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 Okay.
Six seventeen.
So yes, six seventeen.
I will move to accept the minutes from six seventeen twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion in a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Are you none, all in favor, please say aye, John?
Aye.
Aye.
Wade?
Aye.
And Jeff?
Aye.
And show four in favor, and I, I also agree. Four in favor, no vote. Okay, um, two twenty-five, hey, Mr. Street, Mr. Street. It's an A and R, will we have something here for them? Will we be out there?
Hey, Luke.
Well. Good boy, LJR Engineering on behalf of the applicant, Michael DePlatzi, we, uh, prepared and submitted this approval not required plan for two twenty-five Havel Street. Uh, it's about a seven and a half acre property, uh, on the eastly side of Havel Street. We're proposing to divide it into two, uh, limited frontage lots. So each having greater than a hundred and twenty thousand square feet, each with a two hundred and fifty foot circle, and then each with greater than fifty feet of frontage. One requirement with this project, there's a, there's a part where it narrows up less than a hundred feet wide. Uh, so the northerly lot, the applicant went to the Board of Appeals and obtained a variance to reduce the fifty foot width from fifty to forty-three and a half, and we've made reference of that on the A and R plan that the, uh, decision of the Board of Appeals that was granted. There's a area of wetlands across the rear of the property, um, which we've depicted on the site plan. Um, and lastly, I guess I mentioned that Danielle had sent a memo regarding the actual access on the northerly lot because of the extent of the wetlands. So we, we've provided or haven't submitted it, but we have prepared a plan that if the, if the commission's interested in looking at that, just to show how, um, a driveway access could be constructed at that, there is some uplands in that very southerly corner of this lot. Um, it'd be potentially some wetlands that would have to be filled, which, but it's very feasible, there's, there's plenty of area in the back that that could be replicated and be very reasonable as far as constructing the access. If it was needed that this driveway came across its own frontage, basically. But ideally, to avoid the need to fill wetlands and have more of an environmental impact, the preferable approach is that the, it'd be a common driveway. And this, within an access easement over the southerly lot, um, rather than constructing that other driveway and filling wetlands to accomplish that, but in discussing with Danielle, it seemed that the commission might look to see some evidence of basically what an approach would be to show that that's feasible, uh, that it could be constructed.
For this to qualify for A and R really has to access to its frontage.
Yeah.
And, and it has to access it through, uh, uh, in, in a way that doesn't and that is true, that's not illusory, in other words, it needs to be able to go through an upland area there, so I don't know, from looking at it, I don't know how you can do that without filling, I have to do a certain amount of filling.
There'd be some filling, yeah, as I said, it, this is, uh.
You're allowed to, for access, you're allowed to fill up to, I think it's five thousand square feet per access.
Yeah.
I think there's some, some, uh, some stuff in the code. But, yeah, but I think we should probably want to, we would want to see that exactly how you're going to, um, get that in before we gave the A and R approval, I would guess. I'm gonna ask the rest of the board.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, so, and I, I blew it out, so I can, I can, well, what we did here was to, there's just a blow up of this here. Basically, showing that there is, in this southerly corner of that lot, there's approximately fourteen feet where it's uplands, and then as you go into the lot, it becomes wet. You were showing, if you came in right at that corner with a driveway of, you know, standard width, you'd have to fill some wetlands approximately three hundred to five hundred square feet, depending on the side slope retaining wall and how that was treated. Um, but it would be very feasible and reasonable if that had to be done, so, um, that's what we're looking to show on there, and also that is certainly way less than if it's five thousand square feet or if it's some number like that, but we're talking on the scope of three to five hundred square feet, uh, pretty minimal. Um, so, that was the point of that, was just to kind of illustrate how that could be done.
True, you know, you've done so before that would not necessarily find a common driveways either.
I, I understand that, that ideally you'd like to see each lot accessed across its own frontage. In my experience working in the town for quite a few years, I know there has been situations usually involves an environmental impact issue where there's one in particular where there was a wetlands and a stream crossing multiple, like A and R lots, where they constructed a one bridge crossing, all the lots shared that driveway access.
Yeah, yeah, kind of for Central Street, I think.
On Central Street, exactly, so I, and I, I think that's come up, not to that extent, but similar situations over the years, and, uh, I think it was something that where we said, well, look, we could construct in this case, two driveways, but in that case, it was like three or four or five.
Right.
All have their own wetland crossing and impacts to the stream and the wetlands when much more, you know, common sense and reasonable approach, um, to have the, the common driveway, because even if we came in off over this frontage, we would likely want to combine the driveways and have them shared from that point beyond anyways, and there's no rule that you can't, once you get in off your frontage, you can go within ease right now for that.
Say where you have to go.
Yeah.
You've already had that flag, right, it's already flagged?
That's a delineated line, that's right.
Okay, so, um, uh, so do you have to, you have to bring this to conservation if you're going to do this filling and done that, if you have, right?
No, this was one of the first steps as far as getting the, the lots divided and the next step would be submitting, uh, detailed plans. You know, the homes will be in the back.
Yeah.
And those are also partly within the buffer to wetlands.
So you aren't raising, or they will raise the house? Houses, is it?
That's, that's the plan, yeah. There's a lot line, that's it.
Right.
Basically go through it, yeah.
And Luke, what's the existing driveway, you showed the twelve as proposed company, what's existing right now with?
The existing driveway is pretty narrow, it's probably ten or eleven feet wide, uh, so that will be part of the plan when these lots are proposed, with, with conservation, with each widen that, uh, so that it's more suitable for common, you know, driveway that accesses two homes, um. And that will be submitted in the next month or two, and then, uh, you know, when, and abuders will be notified for those public hearings and so forth.
What's the width of the common, the common type, the common driveway type?
Um, we're just showing the existing driveway as it is, but the, the plan, when we propose it, like, the work for conservation will, will, will try to widen it to like sixteen feet or something like that.
So tonight, this is just to see if we're okay with what you're doing right there?
Just to endorse it as dividing it to two lots.
Yep.
And like I said, as far as all of those areas meet the requirements, um, or, you know, seven and a half acres, then to two lots, the circles, um, the areas and so forth, the frontages like this. And we could even get more with the frontage on the southerly lot is fifty-two point three feet, it's fifty feet minimum, so we we could hook that property line a little bit and add another two feet of upland to that northerly lot, and it, you know, on the sketch that I gave you, that would make that, and a little bit more, uh, upland room to work with.
Okay, um, so, um, well, do you guys have any, any comments on?
In overall, um, I happen to be an owner of a limited frontage lot, and I know how expensive they are to develop in the long driveways. Um, I'm, at this point right now, I built in two thousand nine, and my driveway's four hundred and seventy-five feet long, twelve feet wide, and just the cost to replace that driveway, which I'm faced with right now, having to, to do, and I'll probably have to do it in pieces, because it's, it's like a street. You know, um, I have a lot of empathy for anyone that's, um, faced with doing limited frontage lots. And then secondly, as far as people talk about like, this is always development, a limited frontage lot is literally like three acres. Um, it's not a lot of development, really, um, and if you can find the upland, which you need to do, and you have to find it in that two hundred and fifty foot circle, which I do too, you get to put your house and your stuff in that circle, and then the rest of it, you know, two acres is untouched, other than, I guess, this access road. On the preservation side of it, I'm more for one driveway than two. And if Luke is finding a way to make sure that he checks the box that you're having that two points of access off of Havel by removing some of the wetlands, replicating whatever, I think that's a, a good way of doing it, and again, preserving, just having a single driveway that, again, later is going to be a high cost to someone to, to replace, again, for a single house. You know, now this would be two, and they have, they, they share that cost of that driveway now. Um, to me, that's seemingly neighborly fair, you know, I don't, they're not trying to build seven lots here or seven houses, which I think was previously an idea that someone was proposing, so, to me, this is the best of both worlds. That's my opinion.
Jeff?
I I really don't have a problem with it. It's not something that I look at, it's like, totally egregious, so I think if you look at the scope of what he's done, I've just zoomed in and out of the whole thing there on my computer, and, um, kind of makes sense. Um, if it's only a total of three to five hundred square feet, is what you're.
Just approximately that area that overlaps the green, right?
You know, that's, in the grand scheme of things, with the amount of property that's available, that, that's percentage wise, that's a clean type of percentage. What do you think, Warren?
They are stating that you have to have front, access from your frontage, okay? So you, you're showing access from it after approval by conservation, so it seems to you that while we need conservation, it's okay to make, to do the filling that he did, and then the A and R would be valid, I would not even condition it on that or not. John, let me ask John, John, you have any comments on this?
Uh, just, uh, just one about the relocation of wetland, uh, as far as how that happens. I guess, I know it's all five or seven hundred square feet, you said, uh, but you had mentioned relocating it. Are you finding other places on the property to? I guess that, that, using that word, I guess, I'm, just a clarification on that.
Sure, yeah, so it's replication under the wetlands.
Replication.
Yeah, so if this was what would be considered a limited project where the only means of access is to come in, and if that's something that the commission required, then they would be, the conservation would be obligated to approve that if that's the only means of access to the property, and then you're allowed to fill and then replicate, basically recreate wetlands at another location on the property. Usually it's like one and a half to one, I spend a lot of time requiring, so.
And there's plenty of place there to do with replication, so I don't see any problems.
Okay.
If, go ahead, John.
No, that, I was, that was my only question.
So, um, I'm just, I'm just wondering if we have the cap for the horse, if we should, uh, we, do we need to get?
Danielle was gonna.
So, well, you can't condition an A and R, you can extend it, the deadline for final action for a while, if you want to see a conservation approval first. I don't think you're required to get a conservation approval, but, um, I, I, this is sort of a, an area where in order to endorse the A and R plan, you should feel reasonably confident that you could access the lot for the frontage. It may look difficult, but if, if you're sure that it really could not be accessed through its frontage from Havel Street, that would make the subdivision, you should not have. So if you feel comfortable that it could be accessed at least a little bit, um, you know, it doesn't have to be the whole frontage, but some of it can be, you know, accessed, then, then you could make a case to.
And that was the idea of the proof plan, was to show that it's very reasonable and feasible to do that.
Well, obviously, over the years, I've seen plenty of people who even follow more elaborate processes than that to gain access, so, so I know what to do with that. But I was just wondering about the technicality of, you know, which, which should, you know, which should be done first? Whether we should have, get that from conservation first, or?
Well, so our proposal, and maybe I, I wasn't clear, is that we're showing that this could be done, but in actuality, we don't want to do that, so we wouldn't be proposing it to conservation, we'd be shared driveway the entire, coming in the entire length. But because of that concern about access across your frontage, and what Danielle raised, we wanted to show that we at least check that criteria, that we're showing proof that it's very, you know, reasonable and feasible for this lot to be accessed across its frontage, uh, to meet that requirement.
Can we waive that requirement, Danielle?
Um, no, so that's what, that's the criteria for an A and R, is, does it have frontage? And the frontage is accessed from the front. It doesn't have to have a whole fifty feet of frontage, it just needs, like, if the state minimum is.
Needs access.
It just needs access, you need to, you don't necessarily have to build the access there, but you have to be confident that someone could access.
Someone could.
I, I, I mean, I'm saying someone could, that's not a real standard, but.
In, so would that be an on paper? Um, I, you know, noted, I don't know that you show, but you actually, you keep with the single driveway in print?
You would just be signing off on the, the lot lines, there would be no indication of an approved driveway. It would just, that A and R plan is just the, basically the survey plan as it's shown, um, there's not an, a, an approved street or new frontage, because that would be a subdivision.
No, I understand that, what I mean is, if you're saying that we're not allowed to approve an A and R unless it has the access, so there is the access or it can be done. But he's asking for us to not ask them to do it, so that we have a single driveway, am I getting that right?
I'm, I'm saying that it can be accessed from its frontage, you know, very reasonably, and kind of showing proof that that's possible. And I, I thought that that was the burden of the requirement, and that you, if you're okay to endorse the plan, then we, with, with the way it's constructed, we propose to conservation with the plans of how the driver will be built.
Is this, is, are both of these lots owned by the same person?
Well, it's not, it's one property now, that's, yeah, that's why we're here, yeah.
I, well, well, you know, because Mike, you know, you are, and put the A and R, and then you can't use the other driveways or something.
But if this plan got endorsed and recorded, and then they got sold to a different property owner.
Right.
This owner would have the right to build a driveway like this, because we're, we have an access easement there, and that could be done. You know, in, without this person saying no.
So there will be an access easement for that, in, in that, in the documents for that, uh, for that lot, to allow that, just in case, because I mean.
Yeah, it's on, it's on here, proposed access and utility, because that's like the, the water main and water, water.
Because it's all, you know, like, the same road.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. This, this is my concern a little bit. About whether or not that, so I, I guess the fact that you can prove that it could be done means it's not necessarily illusory, and it's not like we're giving building permit or anything, all we're doing is creating one. All right, well, any, uh, other questions, John?
No. I, uh, I guess I'm, just as far as we're talking a lot about the driveway and the proposal of a single driveway, what we're showing here is that you could do two driveways, but when you go to conservation, you're only going to propose it as one, to limit the amount of wetland you have to fill in?
Yeah, that's basically, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay, that makes sense.
Okay, I was making sure that we didn't, we went with the cap for the horse here.
Hmm.
Okay, um, it's. Any other questions from the board? Okay, um, Jeff, you want? Um, are you all comfortable with the, with the process here, what you're doing here?
I think so.
Any questions from the public or anybody else?
I have something. Concerned. It's a major matter, so. Everyone out of public here.
Well.
Okay, all right.
Well, you can ask a question, you get the edge here here, so it's a good venue opportunity to ask, because it might not be to us, but like.
Yeah, just one of my major concerns is, um, so what we're talking about is building a house on the lot, um, two B, and obviously, like, two A, two B.
Yeah.
Two B, which cuts, um, right up to my property line, and since my property is in an area that's kind of sloped, um, I now have water and flooding concerns, once they remove all the trees and start to fill the wetlands, um, I feel like all that water will go down the hill, um, and back up into my yard and my house, um. Once the wetlands will fill up, will contribute to more flooding on my property. I've had flooding issues for the past fifteen to twenty years, both my yard and my property, and I actually carry a flood policy for that reason, so has there been any, um, has anybody conducted like a stormwater management study for a particular area?
That's not, so, so, um, let me explain a little bit about A and R, and A and R doesn't get, doesn't if, when A and R is done, all it does is create the lots, does not give them the right to build, the building inspector would still go over and say, nope, but if for some reason that the lot doesn't perform or whatever it is. So the A and R simply makes the two lots, it is not mean, does not give them the right to build or do anything on, on it at that point. That's a whole separate application.
All right.
Okay, all, all, all we're doing is creating, uh, taking a piece of land and separating it into two lots, now, if, if it was, uh, normally if it was, it was going to have a road, but when it would come in under subdivision, which would be a whole different thing, now, we look at a whole bunch of different, a lot more of the criteria for the use of the land and, and the subdivision, but, and, and A and R is strictly creating, taking this lot and making it into two lots, period.
All right.
Everything else is a separate application.
All right.
Including conservation, which.
You'll be.
That would be something I would.
You'd be able to go to all that.
You'll be receiving a notification when you file.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And at that time, we'll have much more detailed designs, including grades, the part of the
Yes.
storm, you know, stormwater related items, and, and we'd be happy to address those and answer any questions.
Okay, well, thank, stay for the question, because they allow, allow me to explain what we're doing.
Sure, Michelle, six fully drive. It's six fully drive.
Okay, um, so, um.
Yes.
Jeff, would you, uh, we have a motion, um, I think we're all comfortable with this, so, go ahead.
You want to pay for the lobby?
Yeah, we want to hear me the motion, and then, so, yeah. I'll get another page. I think he's looking.
This winging it, like. I printed everything out, so. There's never a reason on the printer, right, David?
I do.
So I can take you to the public here.
No, no, we're, I think we're upset, unless, no, you said, no problem, and, and, and I understand what he's doing, it's just, but then four counties are going A and R, so.
Okay. I move the C P C vote to grant the applicant's request to extend time of final action.
No.
From two, two twenty-five days, sorry.
Yeah.
Um, I move that C P C vote to endorse as approval not required the plan entitled Plan for Land, two twenty-five Havel Street Assessment Map, forty-four Corso, forty-five North Running Massachusetts, Middle Second County, eight six nine twenty-five, drawn by LJR Engineering Inc.
Second, man.
I have a motion in a second, uh, any further discussion? Are you none, I'll take a roll call vote, uh, I'll say, John?
Uh, I vote to endorse.
Okay, Dave?
Endorse.
Yep.
Same, endorse, I did.
Yeah, I agree, I think he's done, done a job here, so. Direct a show, four in favor, no opposed. We have a friend here with, they come.
Thank you.
Couple minutes, I mean, I'm just making sure we do it all right, you know what I mean?
Absolutely.
And. That's my one.
Uh?
That's my one. Yeah, you're in. Thank you.
That was new to me. Found them all here. Yes, we already have the bill.
Is that, so, Tom, that are all right?
Yeah, a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, too.
Yeah, I like. We get that a lot, yeah, yeah, that's, it's all.
There you go, thank you.
We. We're all here.
Yeah, that's.
If someone could read on it, please.
Yeah, I know, you're good. Still, the very top, and, and I'm a seven, very long, it's all.
Seven fifteen.
Alright, it being seven thirty two, I know, uh. Uh, both the extended public hearing for two forty nine April Street, David South and. Thirty thirty on the road, driving subdivision.
I almost didn't recognize you guys.
I know, I know. We apologize.
No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. Because you're doing your thing, so.
So Joe Man from Man and Man Law Firm in Middleton and. The project being closed by John Bullbrad, um, Bullbrad and Aaron, this is John, um, uh. On virtual, and actually I can see Brendan now, the civil engineer responsible for designing the plans, is also on. So over the past few months, we've been working with the peer review engineer, um, GM two. To basically resolve all the issues, answer the fire department questions with everything before we came back, so we would say new. We answered all the stormwater questions and answered all the simple questions. Um, hey Brendan, can you share the plan and put it up, please? And you might want to unmute yourself.
I think I can allow you to share.
Oh, do you have to?
I think I have to.
I I just sent a request.
Got it. So essentially, the plan is exactly how you saw in, um, when we did the O S R D. We we kept to our word about the amount of open space, you know, how we were actually breaking up the subdivision. The the, um, the ability for us to provide smaller units and and provide multifamily housing. Um, we were able to honor the setback requirements for the Conservation Commission and actually appear before. Then this evening, right before this hearing. They did not close the hearing, but only because we need to put up a couple of signs. On, um. The water pool, but and and then we had to give them some slopes of pipes, um, relative to the stormwater. Which hadn't been asked for by the peer reviewer, but it's very easy for us to do and resubmit. So it will be before then on August nineteenth to just wrap it up and and close the hearing at that point, once we show them the plans with those couple of additions. Um, so again, we kept, we we honored what the O S R D was all about. Um, and the only change we made, um, was actually an improvement. We reduced the amount of impervious area on the southern. Um, access road because we we had to have, we had to have access behind for fire department. So what we had done was, I don't know why we hadn't thought about it, but there was a parallel road on Amber Road. That was gravel for fire access. And for some reason, we built a parallel road on the lot instead of just. You know, looping into that because it's for us, we have full easement to use it. So when we were looking at it, we agreed to reduce the impervious area by moving. The fire access road, just connecting the fire access road that exists today. So that's what we did. The Conservation Commission obviously was happy because any reduction impervious area, they're thrilled about. Um, you know, we kept the trees where they are because as we had discussed, we wanted to maintain privacy, um, for the homeowners. And clearly delineate where is private property and where it was where the public actually had access. Uh, and then we did use, um, additional, some additional, um, post and rail fence. Around, you have basins because the peer reviewer thought it was just gonna be safer. Even when we didn't have to because the slow requirements didn't require, we still put them on. Um. And those really young the, um, changes. I did have, and I don't know, I'm I'm sure Danielle already gave it to you. But I do have a copy of the, um. The response letter for, um. G two, it's not you, you already gave it to them, that one to sign off. And then we did provide the, um. The fire department. Fire department, um, letter. Did you end up giving the power response?
I dropped it in, but tonight, so I don't know if anyone.
So it's very, it's really, it's fire department asks for a few things. And most of them are done when we actually complete the subdivision. Um, but one of the things they did note, and we always do have to provide, you can't be, you can't have fire hydrants that are 500 feet separated. So we ended up having to add a fire hydrant. Um, and Brendan, you do that and add it into the plan set. Um, but other than that, as you can see from these comments, you know, they asked for signs. Before we do our curb cuts, we agree. You know, the cul-de-sac desk allows fire access. We actually provided that. Um, the fire department asked for the hydrants. Again, we added one. Um, and then the uh, four and five and six are all things that are done if they do course. As as well as the placement for the hydrants, we do it in accordance with the water department requirements. We show them every so many feet and they tell us what they want to see. Um, they asked us about the driveway slopes. We just explained we were doing it in accordance with what the fire access requires. Um, and we have no bridges, so their final comment was for not. Um, but that's basically. It's a we did respond to all of those and all of those comments had been responding to and went back to peer review engineer as well. Um, so at this point, I didn't know if you want Brendan to review the plan for you or if you have any questions for us. It's been a pleasure, the board.
Okay, um, we have a couple of things still to be taken care of, so nothing to be. Voting on this tonight, but it is a good a good update. I read through a lot of that. So there's a lot of, there was a lot of peer review items and a lot of responses. And some of them were like, well, it's not quite done yet, but. So but but, uh, I don't know why they would. Why they put that in yet, but anyway, um. Um, it sounds to me like you're well on the way to getting it squared away.
Alright.
So, um, um. You, and you guys have any questions?
Is there a question on the comment about the impervious reduction? Is what wasn't the the proposed access for fire department gonna be a pervious type of?
Yes, it does. It has to be handled to support.
Yeah.
So it is, it is, it is a pavement, but it most certainly is a grass and not with grass.
Yeah, cuz I I thought you guys were, and it is a small item, but I just thought you were gonna use the, you know, grasscrete, one of the different Geo Mat type of things.
We were gonna use like, it's still semi-perish, it's still not, it's still not grass, so now we're able to do it. And it just, it it just. Uh, you know, you can't see the forest in the trees. Literally, we are looking down. Why do we have two access roads? Thirty feet from one another. It made absolutely no sense. And we were using, no, we weren't using asphalt and it was going to be. Some semi-perish, I guess, I wouldn't call it.
It's mostly impervious, but yeah, it's it's not asphalt.
Is it impervious pavement or?
There is, but it's it's the same, it's all relative.
Like a reprocessed, crushed, reprocessed?
Yeah, it's it's all relative. The second any vines get in it, it doesn't work anymore. So, um, the best bet is to do what we did and just use the D C R access road, which is our big travel.
But it's gonna be, can you imagine? How how long have we been looking at this?
I didn't see it either.
Score.
Yeah, it is a score, you know, anytime you can reduce, it's it's great, so. We're pretty happy about it, yeah.
There is a comment on the. Zoom. Jean Hardy, I would like the plan reviewed for the.
Oh, sure. Oh, she would like the plan reviewed for the community. Is is that, I just read the comment. She, so it didn't be okay with the board. I mean, I I can do a quick review. Is that alright?
Sure.
Since somebody's asking.
Yeah.
Hey Brendan, you wanna?
There has been a long delay with.
There is, and and I understand. So I'm gonna start it and then Brendan's gonna fill in. So basically, this particular subdivision, um, is an open space residential subdivision. Which means a substantial portion of it, at least fifty percent, has to be dedicated to open space. So when we evaluated the project, we had the option to actually use access lanes that were amber road. However, we did not choose to do that and actually acquired another piece of property to provide access. Because Amber Road had a lot of difficulties relative to site distance. So that's why if if there was some commentary on Amber, we are not using it. We are, however, improving it. Because we had an agreement with the abutters who are on Amber Road as well as this commission, um, to be able to. Improve the quality of the access as well as, um. How do I say this? Repair some of the things that have been done to that access way by a. Prior undertaking. So we have that plan. It's part of our submittal and part of our application process. So now we look at our access over Havre. We have an existing home that is there. We are actually going to eventually raise that home and then construct. The two family, uh, I mean, the two single family homes that exist on that is called Lucas Lane. Um, and. Then we do meander back. Now that roadway is less than five hundred feet, so we didn't require any waivers from subdivision approval. Um, we are looking to create a long driveway, which is why we have to provide the three sixty around for the fire department. Um, for that lot, that's called lot thirteen. Um, the goal of the O S R D is to provide multiple, um, is it multi-disciplinary homes? So you want to have a a variety of homes, and that's what we do here with the three families and with the single family home. Uh, that that roadway that extends off of the cul-de-sac and provides access to that is is a driveway. That is simply for those ten homeowners to access their property. We, in addition to that, when we were actually developing this, the whole point of an open space residential subdivision is to create open space. That can be used by the community and it should be something that's connected to other open spaces. This clearly connects to Carroll Parker and we have trails that will meander about and will eventually get to Carroll Parker. There originally been a lot of problems with Amber Road, which is a very small road and people were parking on it and there's only two homes there. So what we had originally intended was to put parking there, but once we talked to the abutters, we immediately removed it. And put it at the end of the cul-de-sac where you will see we have provided public parking off of the end of the cul-de-sac. So people can come from the community, park with their bikes, whatever they want to do, and then go back. Um, as you can see, there are two wetland channels. You can see the big, it's a big wetland, I think it's mostly B V W. And then to the north, you have a vernal pool. That's where the Conservation Commission is asking us to put additional signage. And maybe even some educational signage, but nonetheless signage, so people understand it's an it's very important resource to the community. It is an important resource for wildlife as well as fauna. So we are doing that and the rest of the subdivision, except for that. One pinch point where the where the driveway goes back, we've been able to keep it out of the buffer to the wetland. That was very important to not only us, we didn't want to impinge upon the wetland and we had a lot of area to avoid it. As well as to the uh, Conservation Commission. This particular subdivision. Or I should say roadway is serviced by a single septic system, which is great. It's a common septic system. This will be a condominium. So what that means is the septic system will be well maintained, it will, um, be monitored. And, um, it'll be well taken care of by condominium association. Um, but we will look to have the roadway accepted as public, but everything else will be private. Especially that driveway private as well as the, um, fire access road behind. While D C R does maintain that, we will have responsibility to do so as well. And under the deed that is the predecessor entitled to John. He has the right to maintain all those access roads and to use them as anyone would a public way. Um, okay, so and then there's stormwater and I'll let Brendan go through it, but I don't know that the public really. The stormwater, we did a review and we passed. So now maybe Brendan slides it down so we can see the the northern. Property. We're trying to make it so that it's it's palatable to the public and then the commission can ask whatever questions, obviously, they see fit. Okay, so here you can see Priscilla Way. There's there's absolutely no intent to develop it. That had been done before. We actually have to do some wetland replication because of the prior efforts of another individual, not us. So we're going back in and we're going to repair that wetland in that area where you see, um, in a in a cloud. So this particular access point enters off of Charles Street. This, um, area actually has, um, I think it's eight, right? Seven, seven. Single family homes and then you see that one lot that has, um, two duplexes and two single family homes.
Three duplexes.
I apologize, three, yes. Okay, and then we have, yeah, I can see it now. And then we have individual septic systems for each lot. So that back lot is one and then the two fronts have their own septic system. Um, again, the roadway meets subdivision standards. It's under five hundred feet. It has sufficient turning radius as does the other. Cul-de-sac for a fire truck, um. And again, you can see clearly that this particular property has no impacts with regard to wetland. They're all on the edge. And none of them are on the interior, but we are operating completely outside the hundred foot in all aspects on this particular roadway. Um. Okay, so, oh, you know what's really important, and if I may, I might divert from talking about the subdivision, but talk about the traffic report. So we had a traffic report done and there was a lot of commentary going back and forth between our peer reviewer and our traffic consultant. And I know that a lot of people in the area were concerned because the original. Um, access point had been on Amber. Um, we reviewed it with them. We went over things, we made some modifications and we did, uh, you know, the traffic counts and then actually even did a secondary traffic count again. And they analyzed all of the connector roads. They looked at April Street, they looked at Marblehead Street, right? And and the the peer report, um, concluded that the way in which we have designed the access points. And I will point out, I think Mr. Pierce had asked us to move the roadway, which the peer reviewer, uh, had commented on as well. Was, you know, an important, um. Change to the plan. Um, so that really sums it all up as far as providing a really brief and general overview of the subdivision. Um, I don't know if, um, Ms. Hardy has another question, but.
If Brendan could just show that little hook that, um, they put on on the Havre Road access.
Wanted.
Point you guys.
Down here?
Yeah.
Yeah, see how we pushed it, what what we ended up doing?
I can, um, I'll put a different plan up. That makes it a little more clear.
I thi- I think everyone would agree that's that's the one that everyone had a little bit of issue with because of just the big. Granted, I'm pro-propping that's just beyond there and then the sightlines to North Street.
Yep.
So this was just to piggyback off what Attorney Man was saying. This last section of the road was more perpendicular to Havre originally. And the change was to actually skew it to come into Havre to allow for a more open sightline looking north on Havre.
Just looked like the right thing to do with.
It it was.
Makes sense, yeah.
Hey, any, uh, any other comments? Okay, um, any questions from the?
So Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy is is saying. Back report did not include entrance to Lucas Lane and did not contain historical data, um, that had been updated. Yes.
Has that been updated?
Oh, there you are.
I'm sorry.
No, no, please. So I'm gonna let Brendan address it, but yes, we, the traffic report was complete and contemplated both access points. Brendan, can you please address Ms. Hardy's comment? Can you see it?
No, what was the comment? I have you guys minimize because I have the drawing up.
No worries. She said the traffic report did not include the entrance to Lucas Lane. It did not contain historical data. Had that been updated?
Uh, I believe, so I believe that was part of the initial back and forth of the traffic consultant and G M two. Um, and with that, GM, uh, our traffic consultant Ford Hill provided. Multiple levels of backup information, uh, more than the typical amount. And it did include the Lucas Lane entrance, to my understanding. Um, we also, I believe we also extended the. The the study area to incorporate a different, uh, an additional intersection as well. So there the the factor of safety on the study. Area and the information that we have is is pretty significant.
Okay, the initial one did not include. It had the the North Street. Intersection, but it did not seem to come down further towards Eisenhower and at the entrance of Lucas Lane. And and. On top of that, um, is no historical data. That's a very dangerous section of road. Right now, there's the pole right at Lucas Lane got taken and cut in half on Christmas Day this year. So there's, that's what I was looking for is the historical data of that section.
So Ms. Hardy, they did, they had asked for the historical data and then it got updated and provided. It's called rock crash data. And that was updating, that was part of the, um, comments from the peer reviewer. And I know for certain that the entrance to Lucas Lane was contemplated because that was part of, um, the site distance analysis. Because at one point, they wanted us to revise and resubmit our site distance information. Because originally in our original plan, we had said it's it's more than three hundred and thirty feet. And and the comment from G M two, Mr. Carlson, Eric Carlson, was you can't tell us it's more than, show us exactly what it is. So we had to go back. So we had to go back and resubmit. So that has all been considered by the peer reviewer for the town. So we hired our own traffic consultant, but that went back to the town's peer review traffic consultant, which is G M two.
Okay, uh, I I guess I'll come down to Town Hall and yell in and try to see the updated plan. The updated traffic study, because I have not seen that yet.
I have additional questions if no one else does. Until I think you said that there were two single families hu- fa- family homes on that first section of Lucas Na- Lane. On this plan, it looks like four.
No, it's two single family homes, and then it's two duplexes.
Okay, I didn't think I heard that. So two singles and two duplexes. So to do that, did we have to change the zoning of that lot because it was a single family zoned?
No, because it's a, oh, is it okay if I just continue? Because it's an O S R D, it permits you to do duplexes and multifamily homes.
Okay. Okay, another question I have is where are the sidewalks going up Lucas Lane?
Sure, you see the dark brown lane that's on right now? That's the sidewalk.
Okay, so it's on the northbound side?
Yes.
Okay.
Is your house is to the south, right?
Yep, yep, to the south. Uh, and then. Another question is what is the plan for the ledge that? Will be under, we're right in the way of Lucas Lane? How, what is the plan to? Remove ledge to um do the road?
So it's. Whatever it actually requires. So if we can hammer it out, we'll hammer. If we have to blast it, we'll blast it. We can just bulldoze it out, we'll bulldoze it out. You really don't know until you uncover everything. I mean, I think in certain areas, you know, Ms. Hardy, that there's going to be ledge because you can see the outcroppings. In other areas, you're really not certain until you go there and start moving earth. But we know there's ledge there. We know we're gonna have to do stone removal and ledge removal.
So what point is that, is that? What, what point would we know that? Once the construction starts?
Sure, when we're in the field. So when we go to do, so anytime you do um earth removal, and if you require any blasting, you have to get a permit. Through the fire department because you have to put certain plans in place. So what ends up happening, you hire a blasting company, they come out, they go to all the neighbors, and they do what I call a survey. And then they, and they carry insurance. A pre-blast survey, thank you. So they do a pre-blast survey of all the properties before they're able to start. And then in order to start and undertake the blasting, you have to comply with the rules of the town, which are to set a tone off. Notify the fire department. You have to do a whole bunch of things before you can actually start the blasting process. So it is controlled by the by the town, by the fire department.
Okay.
You have John predictions on tonnage or cubic yardage of blast?
Uh, not yet. Uh, like Attorney Man was saying, that we don't have uh rock data. We have an idea of uh the rock, but not fully done profile, correct?
Question about um earth removal. Um, I know we were talking earlier today about the flood zone and how there are new human maps. And there's actually a little bit less flood zone, it seemed like, than there was before. Um, but we do have an updated flood plain by law, and we now require a permit, not necessarily a special permit, but a permit. For earth removal in the flood plain, and I just wasn't sure there was, if you expected that the new flood zone area. Any earth removal within a flood zone? And if so, just, we would just need to make sure that.
Brendan, we should actually update the map to show the new area, because I forgot about it. It was just done in July. It was like June twenty fifth effective. Earlier. So Brendan, we do need to update our plan just to show that new mapping. I think you, we discussed it. You said it actually was less. You're on mute, by the way. So I don't think, are we, I don't.
Sorry, I have full-blown chaos here with my daughter right now, sorry. What was the question with, was it the flood zone?
Yeah, we were moving any earth from the flood zone, Aaron?
No, I don't believe so. I believe the um. Let me go to the open space plan. So you can see here, the flood zone is primarily along the central portion of the site. Where with the only work that we're doing is the actual restoration of the crossing. So that we're removing the timber crossing and. Uh, removing the fragmites, the invasive species, and just kind of regrading that area to match pre-existing contours. But we're not modifying any of the flood zone in any way.
We probably will have to get a permit, right?
I think any work now in the flood zone FEMA requiring a permit, it's just an administrative permit. It's really just to put it on record.
Yes, so Brendan, we're just gonna have to make sure, we'll know we do that anyway.
We may want to note it on the plan, especially if you're gonna be updating it with the July eight maps.
So when you do it, Brendan, just up, when you update for the flood, just put a note on that we'll secure all required permits from FEMA to do the work within the flood plain?
Yes, and what was the update that you're referring to? Sorry, I missed the first part of that, the whole thing.
FEMA map, the new FEMA map, remember we talked about it the other day, that there was a new FEMA map, and it actually caused the flood plain to be less on this property? But we never, I don't think we updated.
Yeah, so this is actually, this reflects it.
We did, okay.
So we modified it because we got some comments initially back from uh. D E P, and at that, at that time, it was a preliminary map. So you can see on the map, if you're still seeing my screen. It was dated twenty twenty-three, June eighth, twenty twenty-three. Um, and it sounds like it's being put in uh officially uh this year. Uh, but yeah, so the new, the new FEMA flood zone is shown on the plan, which is the dark black dash line um on both sides. Where originally it kind of encompassed the whole area.
I just think you need to change the note because there's no long preliminary. They adopted it.
On it just to say that um local permits pursuant to um, you know, the flood plain bylaw would be obtained. Maybe just note that on the plan, just because we now require administrative permits for earth removal in the flood zone.
So you just note that, Brendan, we're gonna just say on that note?
Yep.
Thank you, of course, of course. I'm sorry to start you.
That's okay. I I have one more question. You touched upon the storm water, but you did not go over that. Can, can we see where the storm water drainage will be?
Yep.
I'm there, Brendan. Brendan, can you go, do me a favor? Can you? Um, just do it quickly for Clark and then go down, because Ms. Hardy is gonna be more interested in the southern portion, but we should describe it all.
Yes. Uh, uh, oh, I went to the wrong plane again. Hold on, drainage. Here we go. All right, so yeah, just briefly, um, the Northern Road, Lucas Lane, comes off of Charles Street. Um, the front portion, the first, say, two hundred fifty feet or so, three hundred feet. Drains downhill towards uh Charles Street and is collected by a couple catch basins that discharge into a proposed infiltration basin. This will um accommodate up to the twenty-five-year storm event. And then the hundred-year storm event gets collected by an overflow structure that discharges and connects to the existing drainage infrastructure within Charles Street. Um, the rear portion of Abigail goes towards the end of the road in the cul-de-sac. Again, collected by a couple catch basins and flow through uh subsurface piping. To a proposed infiltration basin behind Lot seven and Lot eight. This, again, will accommodate and infiltrate up to the twenty-five-year event and overflow um down gradient towards. Towards the existing wetland area to the south. The last remaining portion of the upper row uh development is Lot six. That is on the southern side of Priscilla, so where it's disconnected from the main roadway. It it has its own little drainage area. Um, so we have captured and treated and collected the runoff from Lot six. Put it into another infiltration basin, and that will, again, infiltrate and overflow. Um, during the higher storm events downhill towards the existing wetland. Another thing to note is that each of the structures, proposed structures on Abigail have a subsurface uh infiltration system proposed. Um, this is to handle the infiltration from the roof runoff, and that helps mitigate the peak flows coming off the proposed development. The southern portion, uh, the Southern Road, Lucas Lane, which is probably more of a concern for Ms. Hardy. Um, the, again, the entrance, the first three hundred feet. Is discharged downhill and collected by a couple of catch basins directly at the entrance of. At the intersection of Havel and Lucas. That discharges to a proposed infiltration basin, which has, as you can see here on the plan, a proposed outlet control structure. That overflows into um the existing drainage system on Havel Street and discharges elsewhere. The upper portion of Lucas Lane, where the end of the road. Um, again, flows the opposite direction towards the end of the cul-de-sac that is collected by a double catch basin and. Discharges into another proposed infiltration basin that overflows into the large border- bordering vegetated wetland area. This Lot thirteen driveway, again, similar to Lot six, it's, we treated it as basically its own um isolated stormwater area. Uh, we broke it up into two sections. One is the middle portion, where it is a natural low spot, where obviously we have the vernal pool to the north and the wetland to the south. We took caution to um. Send wa- stormwater runoff away from the vernal pool and into a bio retention cell next to the wetland area. It's within fifty feet of the wetland, so it will be lined and will not be allowed to infiltrate. There will be a perforated. Underdrain that will collect the runoff after it is treated in the bio retention area, and that will discharge into the wetland. And lastly, the end of Lot thirteen will capture the overland runoff from the house lot. As well as the driveway, which, as you can see, there's a high point here. This will grade this way towards a large infiltration basin with a sediment four bay. That will overflow into the border- bordering uh vegetated wetland. Similar to the Northern Road, all of the um. Proposed structures will have a subsurface cultech system, infiltration system to to handle the roof runoff. With the exception of Lot eleven and Lot twelve, obviously, everyone knows there's ledge out there. And the last thing we want to do is put a cultech or subsurface system in the ground that is essentially just going to turn into a pond underground with. There being so much ledge. So we were not proposing anything on these lots. But that runoff is accounted for in our stormwater calculations that is being handled with the roadway drainage system. Um, all runoff values meet or decrease in the proposed condition compared to the existing pre-construction condition, as you see it now. Um, we meet all the stormwater standards um and have gone back and forth quite a bit with D E P as well as the peer reviewer. To make sure that we're really crossing everything off the list and double checking everything that that the stormwater system will in fact uh operate as designed. So if you have any other questions, happy to respond.
Yeah, I I do. It's a layman question because I don't understand all of this. But eh, at the top of Lucas Lane where the cul-de-sac is. Isn't that going uphill? So how is that going to drain uphill?
So the way it works is it starts down at Havel Street. And for the first, you'll see the station markers, which is basically just the length of the road. So what about station three hundred, right where my mouse is, is a high point? So from this point, this way, it all drains towards Havel Street and is handled by the infiltration basin at the entrance. From this point that way, it flows actually back downhill towards the end of Lucas Lane. You can see that on, this is a profile of the roadway. Uh, this is Lucas Lane right here. So you can see this solid black line is actually the proposed grade of the road. So you'll see it climbs up to to minimize cut fill on the site. We try to follow existing contours as much as possible. And then once we hit the crest of the road, it gradually pitches back down at a more typical uh one and a half, two percent grade. Going down towards the end of the cul-de-sac.
So is the pitch of that road higher than it is today?
No, so if you see this dashed, this dashed gray line, that's the existing elevation out there as as it as it is today. So as typical, we try to balance it as much as possible, um, where feasible. To make sure that the earth disturbance is kept to a minimum. And you're maintaining drainage flow patterns by keeping the existing elevations as close to um, the proposed elevations as close to existing as possible.
Right, because you know what my concern is, is that my driveway is right next to that road, and. I don't want all that water coming down into my house and down my driveway.
Correct. So as as a part of our stormwater design, and I I'll save everybody, I won't open it up. But your property was one of our design points that we looked at um for our design. To ensure that we weren't increasing runoff to your property. So you can, you, in the report, um, I do, I don't have it up right now. Again, it's it's kind of convoluted and a lot of stuff on there that it's hard to follow on a screen. Um, but like I said, your property was a design point that we took in a serious consideration to make sure we weren't increasing flow towards your house.
Okay. So it would go down to the corner of Lucas Lane and my property where that where that meets.
So the these grades right here, these solid lines, you'll see that they're slightly curved. That is to promote runoff. As it flows down the hill from getting onto your property, it will more be channelized towards this basin.
Oh, okay.
And this is all grassed in here, so it's not, it's not going to be a significant amount of water in general anyway.
Okay, and then the the drain, um, the storm drain is across the street. Kind of in front of my property, so that's where it would all drain out to?
Yeah, so that existing catch basin that is there now, we're adding a couple lengths of pipe as well as a proposed manhole to make the bend. To go to eventually run parallel on Havel Street. But there's limited drainage infrastructure in the area, and that is our closest spot that we can tie into uh feasibly.
Yeah, okay, because that that property where Lucas Lane is going now, that floods out from all the rain water coming down currently. Okay.
Brendan, so Mr. There's somebody, it's Austin Jeff Jones, wants to know if the town. Well, this is interesting, because Mr. Pierce, I know this is always an issue. It's about the catch basins and infiltration, who maintains them, the town or us? And this is, by the way, not an HOA, it is a condominium, so it's controlled by statute, not by contract. Um, which is better, condominium is far better. Um, so.
You're you're asking, I think part of the answer is you're asking at some point for the town to accept the road.
Exactly, so.
So if they accept the road, they'll do catch basins bleeding just like they do in catch basins in town now.
Yeah, the catch basins, I think for the, eh, for, so the catch basins for the road, which is that little one. And then at the side of the road, and then in fact, that would be the town. But the catch basins for Lot thirteen, they go up, are the condominium's responsibility. Because it's a, it's not a street, it's the driveway.
Right, it's the driveway, right.
So just, I just want to confirm with you that that is the case.
Right.
You know what, we probably, Brendan, we should probably put a note on the plan. That if the town accepts the roadway, then the two roadway basins would be the responsibility of the town. However, the basins that handled the runoff from thirteen and even. Six, we should have a note on the plan saying that they're responsible to condominium association. Just to make, including everybody we understand, and so people buy, understand.
That should show up in the, in the docs, in the condominium docs.
They absolutely will, because what we'll do, and what I've done before, is I'll actually attach the stormwater management plan to the condominium. And lately, I've just been attaching the O and M and recording it.
Right, right. Okay.
So I think, I don't know if it answers his question, but.
Hey, is everybody else set then? Well, I mean, I kind of already opened it up to the. But are there any, any questions from the public here?
Um, I I just have a question, when the CPC will be voting on this?
Well, not tonight, so because there's still some work to be done. There's there's still some discussions with G M two on a couple of items. So um, once they um, once every, once they're all set, they'll be bringing it back for a uh, for a vote. I don't know how long that will be.
I think G M two is satisfied. They gave us a final letter saying they were satisfied with all issues. Um, I think the one thing that we would wait for is our subdivision regulations require the common approval first. So I don't know when they.
The nineteenth will sign off.
The nineteenth of August, you expect.
You know what Mr. Pierce is saying? Because G M two, we submitted the response from them. And then literally this morning, we got G M two's final saying everything's approved, but I understand this board hasn't. That's why I didn't say anything. And I figured, you know, tonight would simply be an update. Because it's been so long, I didn't want the board knocking out a chance, and then, you know, you'll be back.
We'll probably get that that final sign off in our faculty at some point.
So we have it from G M two, but we would just, so the Conservation Commission, if they're meeting, they would be meeting the same night. Because we've been on the same schedule.
But all they're looking for, they'll they'll close the hearing that night, because all they're looking for is those volumes, and I mean, not.
The signs.
The signs and whether the pitch of the pipe.
So they they tell you they will close it and vote that night?
Yeah, they're like, it will, it'll be done on the nineteenth, so I'm not too concerned. So if the board chose, they could close the hearing, and maybe we could even have a draft decision for the next meeting sometime in September.
I would keep it open just so that we can take the, you know, information from the conservation. I would keep it open just so that we can take the, you know, information from the conservation commission.
Good.
Just in case something comes in, we don't want to have to. So.
Tonight we'll continue.
Oh, continue it. I just, I just want to make sure we choose the correct date for when we plan to vote, because we would want that COMCOM approval.
Okay, you want, okay, you want them to close the hearing, say yay. So then it'd have to be after the nineteenth, because I know for a fact we're not getting it. You know, we can't, and that's our hearing day.
Right.
I'm confident we'll get it on the nineteenth, but I understand the desire to ensure it and then get that plan and get that in your file.
I think we're just supposed to have it.
We take, no offense, we understand that's the process.
Yeah.
So we, you know, we could continue it then to after the nineteenth, whatever you have for your next meeting after that.
Okay, we would just need to extend the deadline if we do that.
I think I have to, the thirty first I extended to?
So we would just need to do it a little bit after that. So our next meeting date then after the August nineteenth meeting is September second, after Labor Day weekend. Whenever you want it to be, we just want to make sure we extend the deadline with sufficient time.
Yeah, I'll extend it through the end of September just because, but I mean, we would be more than willing to come in on September second, but I have to defer to the board because, you know, your schedule was, we can, we have to present all three members, so.
Yes, we do an extension now or continuation now, September thirtieth. That would probably encompass, and then if we have, if we get it, we get the paperwork from conservation, we may be able to put it in their earlier meeting. Take care of that.
So you have to continue it to September second, and then maybe we go to the end of the month, that's what you'd do?
I think we should do that. So if that's the date you want to continue to, so we'll definitely extend it.
Yes, until the end of September.
Until the end of September, and then continue here in the.
It's September second.
September second, we feel that.
If the board members can't make it, if something happens, then we go to the next date. It is what it is.
About Mr. Weeden present to.
All three of you.
Three hours, four.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not, for me, we're back to school, so I'll be here.
Oh, that's right, school starts before now and on.
Well, no, no, it's in, it's after.
After Labor Day.
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, but what I mean is, you know, it's September, it's not going anywhere. We're going back to school.
Let's say that should be fine. Well, I'm not a hundred percent.
Okay, well, we just wrote John in.
There you go.
Well, we, I would love to have John participate, but he hasn't participated in any of the hearings, so he cannot.
Yeah.
I would love that, but literally you are the only members who can vote now. I mean, his contribution is wonderful, but he can't be a voting member. But Mr. Griffin, if you can't make it.
We're getting it before the thirtieth, you know, in other words.
Yeah, that's fine. Why don't we move it to the second?
Well, move it to September second for the next meeting, and we'll either get everything we need at that point, or we'll get Lisa progress. And then we'll be able to pick a meeting or get a date at that point.
Because we have to the end.
We're fine.
Joe, can I give you an actual letter to sign requests that they vote to extend the deadline for final action?
Yeah, no, I did.
So we're good.
We're going to go for the second, we'll do a continuation to the second. Danielle?
Okay, continue to the second?
Yeah.
Okay, do you want to extend on thirty?
Seven thirty?
Sure.
Your motion there?
Sure. I moved the CPC vote to continue the public hearing at two forty nine Havel Street, seven Shaw Street, thirty and thirty one Amber Road until Tuesday, September second at seven thirty, thirty P M.
September second? And any further discussion?
You need a second vote, because you need to vote to extend the.
I gotta finish this one.
Oh, okay.
Okay, okay, so I have a motion in the second, and so any further discussion? Hearing done. John, how say you?
Hi.
And Dave?
Hi.
And Jeff?
Hi.
And myself, hi. So that's September second is set. Now, next vote. Tell us what you wrote there.
I moved that the CPC vote to extend the deadline for final action until September thirtieth.
So moved.
And second?
Sorry.
Okay, and any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, we'll call John.
Hi.
And Dave?
Hi.
And Jeff?
Hi.
And myself, bye. So let the record show forward, favor no votes.
Thank you very much. Enjoy the rest of your summer.
See you guys.
Thank you.
I can't believe.
We'll get there.
I think it's going to be pretty nice when it's done.
I agree.
I think it really does.
I would say it would be a very private location for people to do it.
Thank you.
Considering what we were looking at before, we very much appreciate your hard work.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So let's go to seventeen Anthony Road, three forty six Havel Street for plan endorsement. We, I guess we finally got our letter from the power company.
Jimmy Anley Civil Design Consultants, he got a beer with me, coming in late to this project.
Okay.
He bought what I did bring tonight, and see him copy the bond final prints. I don't know where I should put it. And also my logs.
Okay, thank you. Those are for the subdivision, and then you've got the land court and stuff, I think?
Yeah, we did, did everything.
And this is the paper company that we've been doing. Is the land court in here? Oh, I'm sorry.
That's the entire set.
Okay. Oh, it's one of the sheets. No, fresh.
Yeah, it is pretty fresh, yeah.
Great. And then that other is the regular plan, the non-land court plan, that was the. Okay. So I just, just to explain, I don't know if you saw my memo, but the Anthony Road subdivision just needed endorsement, they've got all their other requirements for endorsement. They've submitted their street opening bonds and everything else that we require, their covenants are drafted and everything. We did get the national grid letter granting me movement. And as part of this plan set, there's also the land court plan. The land court plan is not something you've reviewed, it's not something we normally review. It's just a lot of notation, like this survey marks, basically. It just doesn't look like the, you know, it's just done a little differently, but it's a requirement because.
So we still sign that?
You still, yeah.
We have to vote to sign.
I'm sorry?
You have to vote to sign.
You should vote to endorse it and then just start signing. And then if you do have any questions about the land court plan, just because we're not used to looking at them, I just ask, I know someone could be.
Okay, Jeff, this is pretty, you left a motion, right?
Yeah, I do. I moved the CPC vote to endorse the plans entitled definitive subdivision plans for seventeen Anthony Road and three sixty four R, Havel Street, Crosswalks two thirteen dash thirty dash sixty one and two thirteen dash forty seven dash twenty five North Ratty, Massachusetts, oh, one eight six four dated one six, two thousand twenty two, last revised, Conomy sixteen, twenty twenty four, drawn by Civil Design Consultants, Inc.
Okay, two forty six R. Is that three sixty four?
A little dyslexic.
There is somebody reviewing the recording, it's small things corrected. Dave, the second here?
Second, yeah.
Second, thank you. So we're going to the second. Any further discussion? Hearing done. I'm going to do roll call vote. How say your John?
I vote to endorse.
Can John move this?
Um, he can vote on the endorse it. It doesn't matter if he was here for the original or not.
I'll take that as denied.
I only need three signatures on there, so John, to answer your question, you don't have to come to town.
Okay.
Okay, and Jeff?
Endorsed.
Okay. So like, for control, four in favor, no opposed, and then to endorse, so.
You can sign with the pen or paper, probably.
Looks like my life reminds me of the old days with temporary buildings and all those pages and pages, you should have night signing. So, uh, see, this is.
There is a statement here.
At least two of those, Mike.
Yes.
Oh, I think it's still, oh, good job, yeah. I didn't even think it's still hard this way.
Gives it nice feeling. Get it. At a time. Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We'll see if we get.
I'll, I'll mention it under.
Yeah.
That might not work.
No, it's okay. It's just a little fat. Thank you.
I'm gonna hold the box.
Where do you skip the street name? We can address that in the future. Oh, the Germano Drive on the plan. It, it actually has Germano Drive printed. I don't think it's been discussed German.
Well, we got something you wanted to do tonight?
Here, um, and you're endorsing the plans. So probably we should talk about it because if it changes after, it's gonna be a little messy. I just realized that it's actually.
What's the name of the street?
I'm sorry.
What's the name?
It's Germano Drive is what's printed on the subject. But you guys usually vote to name a street, so.
Mrs. Romeo used to make sure that we did put a historic name on any one of the streets that we did. So, you know. But now we take some research into the area to see what would be an appropriate name. For that area.
It's a short street.
You're in favor of leaving that way it is?
I don't happen to. I'm okay with it.
So, uh, for the rest of the board and John, the, uh, normally what's done, you know, the board is a take a name. Um, actually really do some research and pick a name that is historic for the area. So I don't think we have, we haven't had the opportunity to do that yet, so. We probably have. The name is, uh, this is so associated with at this point. If you're willing to do this. If we've not really run down the past, kind of stay away from that. You know, basically. Have a easy year, you know?
Number one, is there another, just when you put the same name, that would be number one question.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's, of course, I mean, in the real.
No.
So, um. I don't think of any historic sites that are there right now. I know it's a couple of old families that have been there a long, long time.
Good question for you. CNN number seventeen was the opening to the development. Was the original land purchaser of seventeen.
That's good, a good way to go about it. I don't know if you can do that.
I didn't think you would. If you did, I would really embrace.
You know the name of the original owner of the road is number seventeen?
I know we own the land since seventy-six.
For how long?
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six.
Yeah. Fifty years.
So you're just, just a new partner. Been a long time in the lot. It's a good, it's a good thought, but I don't have a, an idea.
Who was, um? When was Anthony Road actually put in, you know?
I, I'd say fifties. Based on the design of the houses.
Probably fit everything. Fifty, so. Wanted.
Right after the little things just screw up all over the place.
Awesome, uh, just some quick research on the property in March of eighty-seven is as far back as they have for an owner that I can find a Salvi Baglio. B A G L I O.
They said six and this is eighty-seven.
That was eighty-seven, yeah.
No, not far enough, Johnny.
Not far enough? I'll keep looking.
Well, you're running, we're running out of time.
I'm fine. Now, is there anything historical in the area, like anything? I mean, other than Scott River.
Yeah, which is down the end of this, yeah. I think that's the, one of the impacts on Scott River.
Can I ask a question here online?
Sure.
This is, uh, Jeff Jones, sixteen Anthony Road.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I know that there was a discussion in the last meeting about doing research for other names. I guess that wasn't done, but, um, I think the Germano family owned a lot of that land, that land behind seventeen Anthony, but I know Baglio was the owner of seventeen Anthony, like Jonathan had mentioned, and he, I think they, that family had owned it for many years, I think, I thought anyways. But all the other names on the street are first names like Anthony, Peter, Richard, Mary. So probably like a first name would probably fit in better. Just a thought.
Well, what's the first name of Baglio?
Salvi, S A L V I E.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, it was Sal. It did have.
I know we don't already have one of those in town.
So, so, um, is there anything that's similar in either? Because when you, like, Dominic? Dominic?
What's, what's Germano's first name?
Dominic.
Dominic?
Yeah. I like Jeff, really.
I like, I like Jeff.
Plumbing Road. But that's just him, yeah.
Well, that's, that's a good, that's a good thought, though, is the first name, because they're all first names.
I do kind of like that. I mean, if they're all, oh, yeah, if they're all first names, it does kind of make sense.
Do we have?
No, the Germanos have owned the property for a very long.
Is that your grandfather?
Yeah. Dominic?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what it. It probably would. I mean, that fits with all the others.
Okay with that one?
Sure. Yes, I like, I like that just because.
It looks like a baby, I'm sure.
It's a good point that was raised, both the first name. First names, yeah, been very good. Dominic.
Yeah. What do you think, John? You okay with that?
I am.
All right, well, there you go.
Do you want to do it Dominic Drive, is that?
Yeah.
You like the D, yeah.
I think it should probably say that on the plan because it will get recorded and then it'll become.
So do we, does that mean we gotta re-sign all the plans?
No, it might mean.
You're gonna go through all of them and fill it in?
Okay to do?
You're gonna go through all.
That's remaining the land board, you know?
Does the land board plan say Germano?
Like everything does.
Okay.
We talked about this, like, I think, it's been, this has been a long time.
Yeah.
And I kind of, when we talked about it briefly, I kind of said I would like Germano Drive and obviously it's up to you guys to vote. That's kind of how we left it. I never let her any of those. So all the documents, everything we have is Germano Drive, or is it?
On the.
Not. Everything's Germano Drive right now. That's. That's on us. Reference to National Bridge, everything, so I don't know. I think here's your answer, I think here's your answer right there.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm fine with it, like. Yeah. The, the Dominic was nice just in, in not keeping with the other names, but I totally agree. Yeah, you don't want, you know, the waters at this point.
So what's, what's the, what's the, uh, what's the format here? What's the protocol? Do we have to go back and put it on all these pages?
Well, if you keep Germano, then it says it already.
Yeah, it's on.
And it's also apparently on the national procurement information. I think it might be.
Let's leave well enough alone, what do you say?
Agreed.
All right. All right, done.
Great.
Thank you. Yours one.
Okay.
We don't want to hear any good ones. Talk to the neighbors, talk to the people who you work down there. Make sure they know what you're doing. Keep them informed and everything and you'll have little trouble.
All right, thank you very much.
Let's know when you're ready for the pre-construction meetings. Make sure I know when things are starting.
I'll probably have Bill try and schedule it as soon as I can.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. You too.
We should probably let, um, the folks for Amber Road and Abel, uh, Street know whether you and Abigail, if those are not going to be the street name, that they should write it in before they, before we finalize them.
Yeah, now that we've made.
Yeah, they should give them a heads up about.
Yep.
All right, the floodplain article.
Um, so we received our information, our, um, comment letter back from the Attorney General's Office. Um, the floodplain article was approved, but they identified some conflicts, um, with state law that they recommend that we correct at a future town meeting. So I drafted some, um, points to go into a warrant article, which I would recommend we bring to October town meeting. Um, I haven't yet heard back from town council. I wanted to at least bring it to you just to see if you were in agreement that we should be doing this. Um, and in the meantime, town council's comments hopefully would be back to us by the time we would have to submit it for the August, um, eighteenth month when the warrant closes. Um, basically, the two issues identified were, um, the way the wording in one of the paragraphs has been for many, many, many years. It makes it sound like every zoning district.
Well, well, we're about, let's fix that.
Right, and I, it just never came up and it's been that way for decades, but we might as well fix it because I understand why, why the confusion. Um, and then the other piece was, um, accessory dwelling units, we're not allowed to require special permits for them unless the special permit would also apply to needing, um, you know, building a single-family house or any other dwelling in the same area. So that is the situation. Um, we only would require the special permit in a situation where it also would be triggered by any other dwelling, but you need to make that language a little bit clearer. It doesn't change anything from what we actually required in the bylaw. It just, um, I, I think the AG's office felt that it wasn't clear enough that we weren't singling out accessory dwelling units for a special permit, that it would apply to any dwell, and it would, in the way our bylaws are. So that was the language that I put in there for town council to review. And then a couple of housekeeping things related to formatting. Um, so I just wanted to get your thoughts on that. Um, as I said, I haven't heard back from John yet as to whether.
So we don't really, um, so we don't really have to do anything, um, uh, except that at some point, if, if town council says that's all good, we're gonna have to vote to take it back to town meeting for let, for the clarification.
I think what I, what I would recommend you do is, um, I would get the comments back from town council and, um, whatever that final wording is at our next meeting, I'll put it back on the agenda and we would take a vote to submit it to the warrant.
Right, the warrants, right.
If you're.
Yep.
But I mean, do it.
That's pretty straightforward. All right, good. And then, um, we have, do we have these DBAs?
Just the forty-three.
Forty-three, yeah.
It just says forty-three, but it's not the full plan set. It's just the conceptual design. It's not the full. We don't have it yet, but as soon as we get it.
So they're just our edifications, so look at all of it.
Right now, um, when we get the full plan set, I will come get along. I'm helping to coordinate a peer review once we get the plans, so.
No, I did read, I did read through it and, uh, noticed that they, from the original proposal, which they, obviously they got a lot of flack for. This proposal tones it down a little. Um, let's, there's still two hundred units, but, uh, it comes down to down to four stories and, you know, kind of spreads it out a little. Makes it a little more palatable to some extent. And I don't know if you read through the whole thing.
Whatever I did.
Well, I did. And, uh, and it looks like they, they've, um, put a lot of effort into, um, addressing some of the concerns that were brought to the, to them in the productive, these guys, I think it was somebody else in the past. But in an attempt to, uh, to tone it down a little so that, so that, it was always five stories and now it's four stories. The five stories means it's stuck up above the trees and everybody can see it. Now four stories is down a little lower, so there's pictures in there that show that it's not as intrusive. And I think that's what they were trying to do. Is make it look less intrusive. And still maintain the two hundred units. With a couple of buildings, so. That's the, uh, that's, that's kind of the long and short of it. But again, that like she looks, it's just a, it's a sort of a reverse or to an actual filing, so. I'd say, do you have any questions on that? I, I, I did read through it, but, um, there's a number of things in there, but, uh, again, if this is just a, uh, uh, initial proposal, well. It, it's a run out of flack ball and see who's kind of proposing. Everybody, if there's a bunch of people say, well, it's not as bad as what it was, you know, then they can do, they can do forward to realize it, hoping they can get some level of approval, so. And just redo it, I guess, if you get a chance. There's a lot to it. There's kind of a lot of pictures, a lot of stuff to it, but it's.
I'll pass on the full plan set when we receive that.
So old and new business, you have anything?
Um, sure. So, um, I know we had talked in previous meetings about, um, working with our GIS department to identify people who are no longer in the flood zone or who are newly in the flood zone with the M K M maps. So I worked with our GIS manager, has both left unfortunately, but he did provide us a list, um, of uh, people who were in the flood zone before and are still in the flood zone, people who are now in the flood zone who weren't before, and people who were, um, and vice versa. So each of those scenarios. So I worked with the conservation agent, um, and we sent out, um, around a thousand letters to people in each of those categories, just advising people of, um, here's the property viewer, FEMA had some maps out. Your property was in and now it's not, et cetera. Um, and we've gotten a, a lot of phone calls, just asking for some assistance with using the map viewer and looking, um, to see if people's properties are within the flood zone or not. But, um, it's been pretty smooth, I think, um, just letting people know. So no major issues with that really, um, just kind of wanting to inform people. Um, we have been notified, so our open space, um, I'm sorry, our open space and recreation plan, um, which was done in twenty twenty-one. Um, sorry, two, twenty twenty will expire in twenty twenty-seven. It's a seven-year plan and that's a plan that we need to keep current in order to maintain access to grants, um, from the state for, um, parks and recreation and other open space, um, programs and open space acquisition, et cetera. Um, so the state has actually now made these ten-year plans rather than seven-year plans. So for communities that had a seven-year plan, they're offering us the opportunity to get a three-year extension so that we don't have to fully. Um, so we were notified of this. Um, NAPC was the consultant we used for the open space plan last time.
NAPC?
NAPC, yeah.
So, so basically, if we were to, uh, review the current plan and along with, uh, um, Fox and Rec and a couple other people. And make sure they don't feel that there are any major changes to, to be made in the plan right now. Then we could just get their three-year extension and we can start on it again, so.
Yes.
But well, my only concern is, is, um, well, a couple of things that are going on, like the removal of Hillview. Building there, I mean, you know, what, what now? That may want to have a, that may want to have a home in this plan.
Sure, and I think that would be something that would be noted in an update. So the, the primary thing that would be.
Can we not, that's it, can we just update it?
Um, so what we would do in that case is, so I, I, I met with, um, Marty and Maria, um, Parks and Recreation. They were very much in favor of it because they didn't foresee any major changes to the plan itself. Um, but the one area of the plan that can change would be the, the action plan and the bowls. So, um, if there are new projects that are identified or new things that have come up, such as the Hillview, that would be noted as something that would be, um, good to explore. Um, it wouldn't be a full, but I mean, it, the, it's, it's not a major, it, it, it wouldn't be a big undertaking of a public process. It would really just be an extension of this plan that we could update those project goals to say that this is something we'd like to do. So everything that's known, is noted in the action plan for the, for parks and recreation is something that they have either already done or they're planning on doing within the, the span of those seven years. So many of the projects, um, that are listed in that action plan are now done. So we would be noting those things like Kid Spot has been renovated, um, things like that. And so that would be an opportunity to note that the Hillview, um, property is now something that we would like to be looking at. But it wouldn't be an effort to actually look at. But it wouldn't be an effort to actually look at them. Because that, it just wouldn't really fit within this.
Right, right.
But that definitely could be something that would be a big thing to do.
Okay, well, I guess if we, we were to, I mean, I guess we have to take a look at it as well, if they're in favor of it. Now, is this something that we have to vote on to?
You, you don't have to vote. Basically, what it is, is. If the town decides to go ahead and do it, I think it's largely Parks and Recreation that will kind of be. Making the decision about whether they'd want to go ahead with it, but also part of an open space and recreation plan is a letter of endorsement from. The planning commission and from this left board, so.
Does that, so do we. Put that on as an agenda item and then have a public, like a public meeting to just review that plan or? Or do we just do it all in-house?
Yeah, they, they don't require a public process for it. It really would be an internal meeting with, we could have the staff from NA PC. Their, their plan would be to, actually, they gave us a work plan to. Share with you. It would be. It would be basically a couple of meetings and reviewing items that should be added to changed, you know.
Meetings with them, with Fox and Rec and, and Rec.
Yeah, it would be same.
And then within us.
We can't, I mean, we, I, I think we could do it that way. There's no public process required, but they could come, you know, I'm, I'm sure they could come to our meeting to, you know.
Well, I mean, we should probably at least, you know, review the plan real quick if we're gonna endorse it again.
Yeah, for sure. So that should be it to do.
So.
That would happen in part.
You can drop it into the.
I'm sorry.
You can drop it into the ship, but.
Oh, sure, yeah.
We can look it over at some point and then just for us to endorse, as long as they. Perhaps post them approving the. You know. The extension.
So I think what we would do is, so NA PC and Parks and Recreation, I'd be working on identifying the, the changes to the action items, and at the same time, I would give. All of you that, you know, the plan to review, and then when the time came to actually have an endorsement letter, we, you would have the benefit of seeing what would be added and changed.
Okay.
Before actually taking, you know, the vote to endorse that letter.
Okay, that's, that's good. Anything else?
It'll be free. That's the other thing. Um, let's see. We had talked about a Central Street meeting for the sidewalk project for the grant that we can't apply to this year, but could possibly be eligible for next year. So September sixteenth is the date that would work for the town engineer, and it was a date that we had kind of floated as possible. Date for us to have the Central Street neighborhood come in and look at the plans, and I know I've brought this up, you know, probably seventeen times, but that actually looked like a, a good date for, for him to come and for us to discuss that, so. If that's okay with you all, I'll put that on the agenda, maybe lock off an hour.
Yeah.
Yeah. Everybody would love to see that project when you want.
Yeah, I know. It's hard to identify grant funds for that specifically because it's big and it's expensive, but this one complete streets. Project, not complete streets, sorry, sacred school projects, good funds. And then the final thing is, so.
Those, that, that sidewalk is, is. Pretty close. It's, it's pretty close to the schools. I mean, I mean. It's really close to schools, actually.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So when we, is, well, I get my point is, is there any? Is that, is that another avenue for a grant?
Yeah, the sacred school program has, they have a construction grant program that seems to be the most, like, seems to be the best fit because it actually funds. Most of the other grants we looked at for infrastructure are only a few hundred thousand dollars, and it would just be a tiny piece of it, and the sacred school construction program actually could. Fund, you know, a couple million, and actually.
So we should do both, right?
Um, we, we could, I, yeah, we, we could do that. We could do the complete streets grant as well.
Has it been designed? Has there already been?
Yeah, yes, already just been through.
Yeah, was that, was that with grant money?
Oh, so partly it was capital funds, yeah, and some CPC money from the sidewalk.
Some from our sidewalk fund.
Yeah.
Okay. Right up to Spruce Road.
Very, very nice.
It's not a hundred percent design. We could still need some, you know, but it's a, it's a conceptual, you know, it's a good design. That's enough to talk to neighbors about where it would be and from the driveway that's impacted and how many trees get removed. We did actually.
Yeah, your tree and stuff, and that, that's really good with the bike comes.
Isn't good enough for a big dog.
Really beautiful elm tree or, or big tree, my friend, yeah, you gotta cut that down for a side, well, yeah, we do, yeah. You know, so, but, but they're getting used to the idea. And I hear from, you know, anytime that subject comes up, I hear from the people who live on, on this thing, yeah, we're ready, we're ready. Let's, let's do this. Let's get a sidewalk, because that is also direct access to Hips and Trill Park from all of those side streets up there. You know, all the way down, so. And I know from when that sidewalk, that went by, that got put in fully drive after many, many years. Uh, uh, or on Abel Street here. I was just amazed at the amount of traffic. Daily on that sidewalk. So, I mean, they, they do make a big difference. You don't realize. They do make a big difference, so.
There seems to be strong neighborhood support.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so they, they've heard about it, heard about it long enough, so they, they're, they're acclimated to the fact that this is something that's happening. And then there's still going to be a few people probably not happy, but. But I think the majority of them know that this is a project that needs to be done and they're ready for it.
And the people are unhappy and you're cutting down their tree. Can we just give another tree? Just move it back ten feet or something?
I'll leave that up to you.
It's a lot.
Donated by Griffin Plumbing.
You know, you know, it's, it's certainly a fair idea, but at one point, we tried the tree thing, the Main Street, and we bought. Many hundred and twenty-six trees, something. And we tried to get the people on Main Street to plant them.
We got it.
Four of them, we got them around. But then at that point, one of the, I think, the, the Boxwood Road, there was a Boxer Mark Ashley. Anyway, the subdivision over there, the guy fell down and we had to take over the whole subdivision. And our, and our, our engineer, town engineer had to take over being the clerk of the works and build the road and finish building up the subdivision. One of the things they needed was street trees. Guess what we had? So that's where all the trees went. That's a long story, you know? They're actually the way things go where they don't, you don't, you got all these trees in the yard.
A nice available invasive tree.
Oh, here you go.
I'm amazed, I'm amazed at the trees too, where at, at least Portland, one of our developments. The trees that you would think you would want to put in, like red maples and things like that, they're right now like on the naughty list for Portland, I, I think, for. Number of reasons and blight and other kinds of diseases, but.
I got a couple of beautiful red maples.
What?
I got a couple of beautiful red.
I know. That's why when I saw that, I'm like, really? This is, we can't put.
I saved those. A friend of mine was doing a system over in Littleton, and I drove by and saw his truck there, and I saw him pulling his tree down. I'm like, whoa. And I said, don't, don't hurt that tree, and I went and got my trailer. We rode along my trailer. I think I'm having plants, that's how they got there.
You know, the, if you go over the Winchester Common, I don't know if any of you guys been there. You know, the, the, the red oak that sits in the middle and the trunk is like six feet wide?
I know the tree, yeah.
So that, it's a beautiful tree. It's massive. It is massive. It's like three hundred and eighty years old or something. I have a, a friend of mine who's like a tree freak. He runs around and grabs acorns and he, but he sells them all over the country from the tree. He gets acorns and then he gets, yeah, and then he grows little baby trees and then trees this big and that. He sells them all over the country.
Wow, that's kind of neat.
So he's scooping up acorns and seed, whatever he can get from like the really.
So you might find some type of some central street that want to be placed the trees.
Yeah.
But, but that's not really in the budget.
What else is new, right?
We need to get to, we need to get the hot top down, then we can look at trees.
There you go.
All right, is that good? Everybody have anything else? All right. Well, this meeting has turned. Thank you, John, for.
Thank you, John.
Nice to be in.
No problem.
Looked forward to seeing you. Where are you anyway?
Oakland, California today.
Okay.
Nice, yeah, nice.
So it's a little, it's a little bit earlier here, yeah. But I'm still. My body's still on East Coast time, so it's, it's getting late.
Well, you won't do the sub today.
No, what's behind you? What, what artwork is that? Is that like ship cranes or what are those?
I, I believe it's the cranes from, from the, the bay there. Yeah, it's whatever, whatever the Marriott wanted to put as art.
Yeah, yeah. No, that is what you see kind of when you're going over.
Okay, John, see you soon.